Welcome back to the afternoon session of the Public Accountability Committee inquiry into the New South Wales Government's management of the COVID-19 pandemic. And between the commencement of this hearing and now, I have, I'm glad to say, received a negative for my COVID-19 test. And I'd like to thank the Honorable Adam Sob for his chairing of the committee this morning. We have four witnesses this afternoon, Ms Roseanna Barbero from the Chief Executive Officer of the Addison Road Community Centre, Mr Peter Hennessy, the company secretary at St Francis Social Services, and Ms Miriam Pelikano, the executive manager of the House of Welcome at the St Francis Social Services, and Ms Frances Rush, the chief executive officer of the Asylum Seeker Centre. If I could ask each of you, starting with you, Ms Barbero, if you could please give your name, your title, the position you're here, and then take either an oath or an affirmation, the words of which should be in front of you.
My name is Roseanna Barbero. I'm the CEO of the Addison Road Community Organisation, and I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thanks, Ms Barbero. And Mr Hennessy, if you could pull these microphones closer, and there's no harm in speaking up, because we've been socially distanced here, and projecting your voice would be really useful, Mr Hennessy.
Peter Hennessy, I'm a board member and the company secretary of St Francis Social Services. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thanks, Ms Hennessy.
Hi, my name is Miriam Pelikano. I'm the executive manager of House of Welcome, a project of St Francis Social Services. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Frances.
My name is Frances Rush. I'm the CEO of the Asylum Seeker Centre in Newtown. I'll take the oath. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Well, welcome to all four of you, and thank you for the collective work you and your organisations do for some of the most vulnerable people, not just in this pandemic, but on a full-time basis. If I could ask each of you, if you wish, to give a brief opening statement of no more than two minutes, and then we will proceed to questioning. And Ms Rush, I understand you have to go at 12:30, and we'll try and accommodate.
Thank you very much.
So who would like to start?
I'm happy to start.
Yep.
I would like to acknowledge that we, the Gadigal people, are the traditional custodians of the land that we're meeting on, as is our centre at Newtown, and to pay respects to elders, past, present and emerging. The Asylum Seeker Centre has been going for 27 years, and we've been, like this year alone, supporting just under 5,000 people. When the COVID pandemic hit, we had to move to offering most of our services remotely, so we did do that. We kept our primary health clinic going by appointment, particularly for people without access to Medicare. So we continued with that so that people could have access to medicine. We have worked with colleagues here and very closely to provide as much support as we can. We're providing 1,100 people a fortnight with a fortnight's amount of groceries to their home to enable them to stop to travel. We used to provide all services under one roof, so casework, employment, accommodation, crisis support and financial assistance. But since the pandemic, we've changed our model so that we can be on the road to deliver to as many people as we can. What we're seeing are probably four areas that are of concern, I'm sure, to all of us. We're seeing the real impact of financial assistance or the lack of it. All of you would be aware that people seeking asylum, being on a temporary visa, do not have access to Jobseeker, let alone Jobkeeper. So many people that we've supported had three or four part-time jobs and have become independent, paid tax, lost them overnight. So with the COVID pandemic, we set up a hotline, our numbers tripled, and it was around, I can't pay my rent, I can't pay my food, I don't have any food, and I have to move, can you help me? So that's the response that we've been doing. With the lack of financial assistance, it's that real impact where you basically don't know when your next meal is coming from or where you're going to stay. What we've seen is that we've been on the road delivering to people across Sydney, so that South West, North West corridor. What has been really shocking to us is where we've seen two families sharing, which is not unusual. We're seeing three, four families sharing. We had seven individuals, and there are 12 there that we're delivering to. And people say to us, we don't feel safe living like this. But a really big issue in New South Wales is the fact that you've got people who are suffering from lack of security, and that's financial, a job, and where the next job will come from. So you've really got very few options for people. That is severely impacting people's mental health. But what you're also seeing is that the reality of what is going to happen to them, even if people wanted to go home, they can't. And even the request by the Prime Minister, like, go home, is kind of offensive to people seeking asylum when you know what they have fled and the circumstances that they're in. What we're looking at is in housing in New South Wales, people are not eligible for homeless services. So you've got those doors shutting, you've got people overcrowding, and you've got a very compromised situation. So we have concern on that level alone. I'm just going to breathe, I've nearly finished, but that sense of that impact, we looked at the number of people we were supporting in January, and 16% said they had financial stress. We did the same inquiry in July, and it's 60%. Nearly everyone who had work has lost their work and is without any access to a safety net. We have had strong support from Department of Education and Ministry of Health. Our two nurses, that's the only government funding we get, is from Ministry of Health in New South Wales. Our doctors give their time for free, but we've been supported in that way. We are looking at the research that the Refugee Council has done, and that was commissioned earlier this year. So Monash University's John Van Coy commissioned the report, was the author of the report. And just to be really practical, in New South Wales, what you're looking at is around 750 people becoming homeless in the Cumberland area alone. We're looking at, with the moratorium ending, people are already in arrears, they've got very little to negotiate with a landlord when they have no income or no source of income coming in the future. We are very concerned about that sort of tipping into homelessness, and yet the lack of access to homeless services provided by the state. And the degree of hidden poverty, most people who hear about the issue are quite shocked that the number of people, and when you look at those in New South Wales, you're looking at about 40,000 people seeking asylum, living in our community. People are not aware of that, but when you look at that destitution, that causes great distress. I'll just conclude on saying that the current situation is not sustainable. New South Wales Government has provided some money for emergency relief, and that will do what it says, emergency relief. What people need is to be included in a regular income from a Centrelink payment while throughout the pandemic. That used to happen up until March 2018, so it's not a new concept, but that will be the sustainable difference. We're worried that people are losing their rentals, they won't have a new opportunity to come into the market with a rental debt and no way to pay an ongoing rental. So that is of concern. So we would look at requesting, if there can be, representation from state to federal, and also to look at a review and a really creative roundtable approach to how we can address the homeless services for people on temporary visas now. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms Rush. Mr Hennessy, Ms Pelikano?
Sure. St Francis Social Services runs two services. One's in Paddington called Centre 360. Our clients are 12 to 20-year-old young people and their families. We've been there for 42 years. We also have a service called the House of Welcome, which is located at Granville, and we have managed that service for about 10 years, and it provides services to refugees and asylum seekers. Miriam is going to focus on the House of Welcome today, but let me just say that we've had a significant increase in demand for our services, both for counselling services in Paddington and for our refugees and asylum seekers out at the House of Welcome. So it's increased dramatically in the last six months, and I'll leave it to Miriam to go through some of the details of that.
Yeah, Ms Pelikano?
Thank you very much. I would also like to acknowledge the traditional owners of the land, the Gadigal people of the Eora Nation. Thanks for the opportunity to attend Parliament today to discuss some of the challenges that we are facing as a community and as for not-for-profits. Before the pandemic, we were working with around 3,000 people across the year to provide a range of services, including housing programmes. We have a housing programme that is currently accommodating around 90 people per night. We are one of the largest transitional housing providers for people seeking asylum in New South Wales, and our service is quite unique because we are accommodating people who have no incomes and no additional pathways to secure ongoing accommodation in the community. These programmes are mainly run by community donations and some grants. This programme has been going on during the pandemic, and what we are noticing at the moment is an increased referral to this service for women who are leaving domestic violence situations. We have currently three women who we would consider at risk with young children in our housing, four women with young families who have fled domestic violence, and we do have a shared accommodation property as well with four women who have also been referred to us from domestic violence services. During this pandemic, we are seeing the increase in women at risk, and there are very few pathways, I think, to be able to access long-term and safe, stable, secure accommodation for these women and their young families. We are also providing ongoing casework support. Like the Asylum Seeker Centre, we have had to pivot our service to try and provide these services online, over the phone. We're delivering food and financial security and emergency relief support. At the beginning of the pandemic, our phone lines were also inundated with calls, and we had an increase of about 277% in calls with people seeking assistance for mainly rental arrears, crisis accommodation, food insecurity, and then for other reasons as well. But they're the main areas of focus, and about 82% of our calls were to respond to assistance in these areas. People ringing us are desperate, actually. The phone calls are filled with grown men crying, people who can't feed their families, people who are on the brink of evictions. The amount of money that is owing in rental arrears for families is really quite extraordinary. People seeking asylum were already in crisis prior to the COVID pandemic. With the shrinking of the federal government's Status Resolution Support Services Programme, thousands of people were exited from any kind of financial safety net, which has just really exacerbated the conditions for people now across this COVID pandemic. We know that people seeking asylum in the community are facing heightened financial vulnerability, they work in highly precarious service-oriented sectors, and we have seen huge job losses in this group. And despite this, they remain ineligible for any substantive government support, Jobseeker and Jobkeeper, and some are without access to Medicare. During this period alone, referrals via food bank service increased 296%, with our capacity to increase delivery of around 155%. So we know there is a lot of unmet need in our community. As Frances mentioned, the Refugee Council of Australia released a report, and in the Cumberland LGA, in which we are located, it's estimated an additional 2,587 refugees and asylum seekers on temporary visas will lose their jobs, and additional 767 will become homeless. The risk of forced evictions at the end of the six-month moratorium is of grave concern to our agencies. We are already in a position where we can't accommodate people with rental arrears who are at the risk of homelessness or who turn up at our doorstep homeless. So without access to adequate housing and the ability for people to self-isolate in the face of an outbreak, we risk potential increases in community transmitted cases of COVID-19. We would also like to acknowledge and express our appreciation of funding from the New South Wales Government to provide emergency support to multicultural communities, including people seeking asylum and refugees. However, an emergency response won't be enough to cover the thousands of people who will remain in a desperate situation and in need for many months to come, nor meet the challenge beyond this short-term funding. And we are looking for longer, more durable solutions so that we can prevent destitution in this community. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms Pelikano. Ms Barbero?
Thank you. I'd also like to acknowledge that we're meeting today at the Gadigal people and Eora Nation, and I echo what Frances and Miriam have said, so I'll try and keep mine a little bit briefer, but thank you for the opportunity to be present here today. And I want to start with access to food is a basic human right and vital for health and for life. The COVID-19 pandemic has necessitated urgent and well-thought-out food action. Six years ago, the Addison Road Community Organisation, having researched and reported on food insecurity, opened its first original food pantry with funding from the EPA. Who are we? ARCO is an organisation with capacity to reach the most vulnerable in times of crisis. We're a community embedded NGO with the capacity to swing into action because we know our community. We have contact with over 300,000 people and 200 organisations annually. We were established as a local and other, we're already established local and other food supply networks. We have 66 food donors, and our food pantry has an existing infrastructure, public access, vans, warehousing, refrigeration and parking. Our COVID-19 response started in mid-March. In virtually 24 hours, we ramped up our food pantry operations and converted our 1,000 square metre, sorry, 1,000 square metre hall into an emergency food preparedness and distribution centre. For five months, we've been providing culturally appropriate, healthy food, including fresh fruit and vegetables, so important for supporting immunity and mental health to people who have fallen through our society's safety nets. We work with international students, refugees, asylum seekers, migrant workers, CALD seniors, isolated from their families and communities, the LGBTQI communities, single-parent households, arts, culture and gig economy workers, indigenous families and survivors of domestic and family violence. We work with 60 other organisations that order, collect and deliver our hampers to their communities. Between our food pantry and our food relief hub, we are feeding up to 4,000 people a week, and at the beginning of the pandemic, it was up to 10,000 people. And we have added social and cultural and legal support services as the needs arise amongst the different groups that we work with. Some of the challenges that we have faced is that our resources went into fundraising in order to purchase food. We have spent to date during the pandemic $93,000 purchasing food from food bank, and that's at a great expense. And we've also had to adapt all of our operations and site to be COVID-safe. In our opinion, despite ARCO's established community assets and services, there is disappointment about the government seeming lack of recognition and value afforded to a locally designed and built community organisation, and disappointment in terms of state and federal governments' lack of emergency funding commitment. Funding needs to be based on a robust understanding of the efficacy and capacity of organisations that deliver, not just those with a high profile. The issues that we're seeing is that our temporary visa holders, we can't afford to ignore their welfare. Low-wage migrant workers should be provided with the same protections and supports offered to citizens. I know from our work at Addie Road's COVID food relief work that temporary visa holders don't have support from families at home, are struggling to eat and pay rent. People are moving into more crowded housing, and this is how the virus spreads and affects the entire community, and we saw this happen in Singapore. We've also seen recently a lot more reports of suicide amongst the communities. We believe that the $4 million funding for temporary visa holders, which was distributed by Multicultural New South Wales to specialist and migrant and service organisations, is not enough to deal with the growing humanitarian crisis. People need money weekly to pay for food, to pay for rent, to pay for their accommodation and to stay home when they're sick. Our recommendation for action is that the New South Wales Government should create a fund and lead a body to coordinate approaches to food security, research and emergency distribution. We need a whole-of-government approach. For example, the EPA has prepared organisations across New South Wales for food rescue, and that infrastructure with extra support could be used to deliver food relief, and it hasn't. Thank you.
Again, thank you all for your coming today and the work you do in the community. I've been to Addison Road Centre, I've seen the extraordinary work you do, and I think all of us are aware of the work the other organisations do. So I might just hand over to the opposition for some opening round of questions.
Where to start? I just wanted to clarify, because I'm not sure that people are aware, temporary visa holders and refugees aren't eligible, are they? What housing support have they been able to access during this crisis? So the money that's flooded for temporary hotel accommodation and some head leasing, has any of that gone to anyone?
No, it hasn't. Well, I can say from asylum seekers, from people seeking asylum, they're not eligible.
Yep.
There've been some great initiatives, and people who are homeless, but not if you're holding a temporary visa.
So literally, someone walks in the door and says, "I'm homeless," so you have to go away?
The limited response, sorry if I'm cutting across you, Miriam, the limited response is through Link to Home, which is state-funded. Link to Home, all it can offer is two nights' accommodation, so it's crisis accommodation. And then your question is, then what? So when we look at that, and we've been raising that with Link to Home through Premier and Cabinet, through Multicultural New South Wales and housing, is that they're saying, even on the ground, often it's their first port of call from the person answering the phone is, "You're not eligible, you're on a temporary visa." We push through that, and you are eligible, but for two nights only.
So where we've seen great flexibility, we've seen that, I mean, that was ordinarily the case for emergency for everyone, but that just hasn't, that it remained two days rather than the sort of two weeks or whatever, that's just confirming.
Yeah, I think one of the biggest challenges is that once people enter into a refuge for longer-term support, there needs to be an exit pathway, a sustainable exit pathway, which includes access to income. And for people seeking asylum, we're dealing with, particularly now, largely a no-income population, so we can't move through the steps to exit people onto a safe pathway.
So Miriam, where are people living right now? You spoke about three or four families in a single house. I mean, how common is that?
We find it incredibly common. The people are living across Sydney. We, all of us, I think, between our agencies, we provide a certain amount of accommodation, we pay for hostel accommodation, we, a whole myriad of responses in terms of how we can support someone where they are. A lot of people are not on leases, so when we see people, we're delivering food, and I've done it myself to see what it's like, we see people come out of garages. People are sharing rooms, apartments and constantly on the move. And you look at that impact on children, I think there are 16,000 children seeking asylum who are dependent. In New South Wales, we're looking at probably around, I think the figure is around 5,000 children. You've got that constant move, but it's wherever you can find it. When you're earning and getting the income, people have been able to pay rent. And so now, this is the COVID impact that we're looking at.
Can I just go just?
Well, I think Ms Barbero is going to make a point.
Yeah, I'd also like to add to that, that we're seeing increasingly, because every week we're seeing our cohorts, they come to shop or they come to get, so we keep, we talk to them and find out what's going on, and increasingly, they're moving into each other's houses. But there was that group, like, for example, the LGBTQI kids who are from CALD background, who were already living in someone's house and sleeping on a couch. And so we're seeing more and more people moving in together and having to, even garages and cars. We've had people living in cars for weeks and weeks and weeks. We have to call families, often from the same cultural background, to ask if they've got rooms. We've placed 16 students that are here from private colleges into homes, and we've had to do that. We've had to ask for community goodwill. So the community are rallying around that because they can't access the mechanisms that exist because they're not eligible.
Penny?
I just wanted to clarify the numbers. When you talked about 40,000 in New South Wales and then 5,000 children, are the children in addition to the 40,000?
No, as part of that.
As part of that. And when you gave us the figures at the beginning about you basically supporting 1,100 people, does that include kids or is that just their parents?
We're supporting 5,000 people. In terms of food, we're getting out to 1,100 households, so that includes a whole mixture.
So yes, that would be a lot of children. I mean, I'm just interested in the number of children who I think are very hidden in all of these.
I think all of people are hidden, but particularly that vulnerability.
Ms Pelikano?
No, I just wanted to echo that overcrowding is of huge concern. You know, we are looking at, for example, just recently, a woman with a child who's living on somebody's living room floor approaching the centre, saying that she's going to be evicted from that housing because she can't afford any rental payments. So there are these informal situations, they're very precarious. There's, yeah, and so our financial assistance programme is now paying for a co-contribution to a rental payment, but her and her child are living on somebody's floor.
But that crowded accommodation, when we've also got the, we've got the poverty impacts, but we've also got a pandemic, are there any services at a state level looking at the overcrowding and trying to address it, if for no other reason than to prevent what may well be a very real severe risk to the rest of society in a pandemic? Is there anybody doing that?
There has been some work coordinated through Multicultural New South Wales involving housing, involving a number of government departments, because all of us keep raising it and saying that something has to give.
But so Multicultural New South Wales has done something. What about New South Wales Health? Do you know if they've taken an interest or are concerned in this?
They have taken an interest. We work closely with Ministry of Health and with different local health districts. They are aware of it, and in terms of where they have offered practical support, is if someone becomes unwell, they say they would accommodate, someone did get COVID, they would accommodate the family and do that level of support. But I think this is why this is such a great opportunity, is to really, we can keep talking about it, but we're not getting much traction.
Can I ask about the funding? I mean, the government's announced a lot of funding. I am very interested, though, in how that's filtered through. So I know that there was about $10 million for food security, but it's the case, isn't it, that Addison Road didn't receive any funding from that? Can you just talk a little bit about the direct support that your organisations have received from the state government?
We haven't received anything other than the EPA gave us $26,000 because we do food rescue.
But that was, I mean, that was sort of in the works anyway, wasn't it? That was part of their programme around reducing food waste.
That's right, and we've been doing that.
It's not a COVID-related.
No, it's not COVID-related, no. But we were screaming, we were desperate. We, you know, we had so many people coming to us at all hours of the day, so we were desperate. So because we'd had a relationship with the EPA, we called the EPA. And so they, on our behalf, tried, but there was some leftover funding in one of the rounds that they had previously given money, so they gave us $26,000. But other than that, we've received nothing, despite all of our attempts to send letters as well. all of our attempts to send letters as well. And you know, it's good that Food Bank and Aus Harvest received money for food distribution, but they rely on organisations like ours who are embedded in the community, who have relationships with the community, who are able to mobilise and organise the community, who are in a location where it's convenient for the community as well. But more than that is that we have all the infrastructure and all the procedures and the policy to be able to do food, not just any food, but culturally appropriate food and fresh fruit and vegetables. So the freezers and the fridges and the refrigerated vans, and these are really important because people need to have good nutritious food. So that's one part. But we didn't, with Food Bank, we had to buy from them because we had too many people, the demand was just way too big. So even amongst our donors, some of them closed during the beginning of the pandemic as well. So that corridor of food distribution was closed. And so the only corridor that we had open to us was buying food from Food Bank. With Aus Harvest, we receive meals because we also, people come to us. So we have about 4,000 people that come a week physically during the week. So we can also supplement their groceries with meals and we give those away. But we didn't receive anything at all. Yet other organisations who don't do food, who don't have the infrastructure, received funding to do food. So it doesn't make sense in an emergency.
If you can explain to me more, you said they rely upon us and then went on to explain your infrastructure. I take it they was Food Bank and Aus Harvest, is that right?
As well, yes. So we buy food from them.
Right.
And then we disburse that.
Price, excuse me.
Well, so far in the last five months, we've spent $93,000, but that's...
Look, I accept that, that was part of your initial evidence in your opening statement. I'm just wondering, I'm genuinely asking, how does Food Bank charge you for food? If they're charging you for food, is that at some form of discount?
Yes, it is at a discount.
Funded out of this $10 million or thereabouts that they got out of the state government?
Food Bank have always supplied civil society organisations with discounted food, always. Yeah. And they continue to do that and they have continued to do that during the pandemic.
So the $10 million, I take it extra that they got, did that result in a discount or just a greater distribution of more?
For six weeks, we got a $750 weekly discount from them in our purchases.
How about St Francis? Where are you sourcing your food from? Is it the same?
Yes. So we put in a weekly order to Food Bank New South Wales as well. We get a weekly delivery from Aus Harvest. But we are also reliant on community donations. So we do a lot of, we ask, you know, parishes, volunteers, our community supporters to run food drives for us. And you know, we get weekly donations delivered by the community to supplement the products that we're getting from Food Bank New South Wales and Aus Harvest because that isn't those purchases from Food Bank New South Wales. We don't purchase food from Aus Harvest, but that's not enough to meet the needs of the community.
And did you benefit from a short term discount in the same way as Addison Road? Or is it just the usual semi-commercial relationship with Food Bank?
During this COVID period, we haven't negotiated a discounted rate from Food Bank New South Wales.
I'm just sort of interested, I think I'm right in saying the CEO of Food Bank was somewhat ebullient about the additional funding that was received. And please don't take this as criticism of anyone, but I'm just wondering, what was the $10 million used for? Because that CEO, I think it's the correct title, and I'm not playing games. I think he was surprised at the quantity exceeded his expectations. So I'm just wondering where it went or is going.
Well, I don't know if these witnesses are, if you can answer that. We did invite Food Bank to come, they declined our invitation to come and give evidence. But I just, if these witnesses can.
I think there is almost an implicit complaint that, for instance, in terms of Addison Road, they didn't get the funding directly. I suspect, I know why the funding went to two organisations, because it was quick to get it out the door. But if that was the wrong model, I'm just interested in that. Barbera?
If you like, I can talk about a model. I don't think it's the wrong model to give it to those big organisations because they have the kind of reach that we don't. So I think that is a good strategy, that it goes to those big organisations. But for vulnerable people to receive the food, then it needs to go to another layer in the community that is also well set up, that can then, that knows where the vulnerabilities are, like my colleagues here. There's no way that Aus Harvest or Food Bank will know where the vulnerabilities are amongst their communities. And like us, we're embedded in the community, we're not nationwide. But we know where the vulnerabilities are. People know us, they come to us, they request from us, they organise around their groups. So to me, the model is great, like that it goes to the big food distribution organisations. But it shouldn't ignore what is down on the ground that can easily deploy, because you need to be effective and efficient with that deployment and you need all that infrastructure. And the New South Wales Government has invested, the EPA has invested in not just Addison Road Community Organisation, but throughout New South Wales, there are these incredible NGOs on the ground throughout the state that are ready and capable and able, because they have all the infrastructure that is needed, including all the policies, the relationship with the donors or the farmers, depending where they are. And they can quickly then disperse to where it's needed, because they know their community. They know whoever their community are and who is in need. And that's what I'm saying. So it stopped at Food Bank and Aus Harvest, that's where it stopped. So I'm saying it should go one step down so it's in the community.
What about St Francis and asylum seekers? What do you make of that proposal?
I support what Rosanna is saying, very much so. I think we've got, what it also points to is there's huge need for food. It is like we get about $200,000 worth of food donated from a whole range of groups, like Rural Australians refugees, Blue Mountains refugees, a lot of people come from civil society. But we are struggling to get food to where people are living. And I think that's the local knowledge, isn't it? We also purchase from Food Bank and supplement in a variety of ways and work in with Aus Harvest to get their buying power so we can feed more people.
St Francis?
Yeah, look, we operate on very similar models. I think as we have been saying that there is real concern around food insecurity in the community and the numbers are just increasing. So you know, we are doing intakes per week of about 130 people and their request is always for rental arrears, assistance, crisis accommodation or for food. So we know that this demand for the service delivery on the ground is going to increase.
So in short, the funding going to Food Bank and Aus Harvest, them doing that sort of large scale organisational work, you support. But then the food should be being delivered, distributed through these smaller organisations which have the connections in society. And it's not coming through to you free, it's coming through to you at the same rates you were paying before the pandemic.
And also at the local level, because we know our communities, so we work a lot with Muslim communities or people in boarding houses that have different dietary requirements. And so we can, in our distribution centre, which is 1,000 square metres, and we've got so many volunteers, thank you to Play for Life and all the sporting people that have really rallied around it and members of our community, that we can actually prepare food according to people's needs and diets and their living conditions, people that don't have access to microwaves or cooking facilities. You know, there are so many different requirements that, and we can cater to that if, because we know our communities as well. But when you're just getting things from these big organisations, which is great, and we said it supplements what we do, but it doesn't have those culturally appropriate or other requirements that our communities need.
Maybe one thing to add to that is that the need to be able to distribute to the community has increased. So the pressure's on the organisation to pivot the services. So we are doing unbelievable amounts of logistics. We've got volunteers that are, you know, all of us are using, you know, 10s to 20s, like a lot of volunteers within our services to be able to deliver this service. It's a lot of cars on the road, it's a lot of people needing PPE equipment. You know, we do rely a lot on the goodwill of our volunteers who don't, for example, claim costs for petrol to be delivering groceries to people's houses. So I guess there is an additional cost to all the services to be able to distribute the food within the community. For our service, we're still doing Food Bank face to face. We haven't gone outwards, but we have had to rearrange the service to be able to accommodate that so we can deliver it in a COVID safe way.
Ms Pellicano, I just, the figures that you spoke to the committee earlier about in the Cumberland area, the estimation around 2,587 loss of jobs and 767 homeless, can you just, what is that report and where did it come from? And can you just talk us through that? Because it's obviously very concerning.
Yes. So it's a report that was commissioned by the Refugee Council of Australia, COVID-19 and humanitarian migrants on temporary visas, assessing the public costs. And so the report is really trying to have a look at a couple of the main issues that we've been addressing today, which is financial disadvantage, homelessness, mental health as well, and projecting on the numbers of people that are in the community. They've done modelling to look at what the costs to the state and federal governments might be.
And so is that broken down by local government area, is it?
No, they did only one supplementary piece of research around the Cumberland.
Oh, okay. That's why you've got such specific.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
But there is done, Refugee Council as well has also looked at it through where people are living in a government area, and that's also available.
Okay. That's very good. Can I just?
No, you go, Vinnie.
Actually, I wanted to, I know that Addison Road has dealt a lot with, I mean, essentially all of your services are dealing with the people who've fallen through the cracks of other government support. And I'm just wondering, Ms Barbera, if you could talk to us about what's happened with gig economy workers, arts and creatives who've not been eligible? My understanding is your service is seeing a huge amount of those people. Obviously, where you are, we're located in the inner west is partly where people live. But could you just talk through the sort of experience of seeing those people coming through and what the issues they are facing?
So we're seeing a lot of people coming through that are saying to us that they're not eligible for Jobkeeper, but they're on Jobseeker. But nonetheless, they're still struggling and...
That's partly because of high rents?
It's because, yes, because of, virtually overnight, people lost their jobs. And they lived on savings, a little bit of savings, but that wasn't enough, that's not enough now, that's all run out. Most of them are not working. Some have gone back to work, but it's very, very reduced hours. For example, a lot of the, a lot of students are doing Uber.
Uber Eats.
Uber Eats, yeah, thank you. But some of them are doing two hours or four hours a day as well. A lot of...
Those Uber Eats drivers are then using food pantries because they can't...
Yeah, I know, I know.
That's up their food. It's extraordinary.
Yeah. But also, we're seeing a lot of people around us that have worked, that work in the entertainment industry as well. So a lot of the arts and events and shows and music, a lot of people. And also pilots and people that worked in the, for Qantas. We have a lot of volunteers that are coming in that worked for Qantas. So, and they're quite fearful of what next. Nobody knows what next. And some of them have partners that have lost jobs as well, or some of them have partners that didn't work. Some of them have high mortgages, like their people, it could be me. You know, they've got big mortgages and all of a sudden, they just can't, they can't pay. And they don't know what's going to happen when they have to start paying as well. There's a lot of, we have a really big cohort of transgender people as well who don't come out now because of vulnerabilities as well. And they're also suffering, also because, you know, there's a lot of medical issues as well among that cohort. Another big cohort that we've been working with is sex workers as well. So they've stopped working as well and so they're coming also to see us. A lot of them are homeless and so Australian sex workers are helping them by bringing them into their homes. It's endless, it's really endless. But there's definitely a lot of anxiety, a lot of fear around what's next. One of the things that we did at Addie Road in terms of connectivity and to keep in touch with people, is that we asked the different social groups to organise themselves so then we could disperse. They're not organisations, they're not not-for-profits, they're not, you know, they're not associations, but they're just social groups. And they have leaders amongst them. And those leaders have gone round and found out who is vulnerable, who is in need, who is about to be evicted, who needs a place to stay. And so they help each other, basically. And they come to Addie Road, they pack hampers themselves often. So our warehouse allows for that to happen and then they distribute food to their communities.
If I understand, all of you have a common view that if it's people, if it's asylum seekers who have no access to income, foreign students who have almost no access to income, one of the critical requirements is some kind of certainty in ongoing income for those populations. Otherwise, it's just going to be crisis to crisis to crisis. Is that right?
Correct.
And that's really, you're asked for us at a state level is to lobby the federal government to extend federal support to those groupings, is that right? But can I ask you, in terms of running your...
Sorry, that was a yes.
That was a yes, it was a uniform yes. Well, thank you, Trevor. But at a state level, I mean, in terms of funding your organisations, and Ms Pellicano, you spoke about the additional costs, just simply of delivering all the extra food. And Ms Rush, I'm sure the additional costs of all those calls and servicing all those calls, Ms Barbera, the, you know, thousands of people coming to your centre. In terms of running your organisations, what if any additional state funding have any of you received? And what would it take in terms of what sort of a quantum of money are we talking about to meaningfully assist your organisations, given the increased demand?
I'm happy to start and then I might have to leave, I'm sorry.
Okay, Ms Rush.
I think in terms of the need for regular income is going to make the difference. And for people seeking asylum, it was what was referred to as the Status Resolution Support Service. And that meant people got 89% of new starts. Now, that was still below the poverty line, but people could live on it. And that would alleviate a lot of the stress that people are under now. That was ceased in March 2018 and that has caused huge distress. Where no matter, and obviously each organisation will speak for themselves, but we can't pay someone's bond. We can pay, what we're doing is tinkering at the edge. edge. We're not really keeping people safe. We're not able to maintain their rental. That needs a regular income. So we can, we have got a proportion of the money provided by New South Wales State that came in at the end of June. And that was effectively 1.65 divided between six organisations, working for people seeking asylum, particularly people seeking asylum. There was an additional 500,000 that was split between six agencies to allow each agency to employ an additional worker. But that's almost the administration of it. It's not the cars on the road, as Miriam spoke about. It's, it's still not meeting the need. There is so much hidden need that we need to address. But it's never going to be enough without a regular income. We get 4% of our, of our funds by state government, 1% by local, and the rest we fundraise through, really, civil society.
Yeah, I think we're at House of Welcome in a very similar situation to the asylum seeker centre. We also did receive some of the multicultural New South Wales money at the end of June. But that is 1.65 million between six organisations statewide, not just in Sydney metropolitan. So it really needs to stretch a long way. And the additional funds for staffing is to administer that fund. It's not to actually absorb the additional work that has been created across this pandemic. And the solution needs to be a regular income. The emergency funding that we have received is a stated emergency, they're ad hoc payments. And they can't sustain safety for people rental payments. The need is now, it is ongoing, it's this year, it's next year. We know that people seeking asylum will find it very hard to re-enter the labour market, even when things might start to change. When that might be, they are already at such a huge disadvantage. And they are already in such a high financial disadvantage with, you know, we've got people coming to the centre easily with $4,000 of accrued rental arrears, $5,000. So really, without a regular income to be able to just get through the, the day to day, I think we are looking at a housing crisis.
Can I just add one more point, just briefly, to say, I think Miriam, you touched on it earlier as well, and Rosanna has, we are talking about people, like, it's not only the cost, it is really when we're seeing that mental health impact. And I think that people can't see a light at the end of the tunnel. It's like they can see that there is going to be a massive demand or competition for the jobs that are available, that don't have the safety net. Their mental health is really impacted. And we're seeing that. So there's a human toll to all of this on top of the financial amount of money. It's, this can be alleviated. And it's about choice.
Can I just ask one really quick question? Ms Rush, you talked about at the beginning that many of the people that you were supporting would have three to four part-time jobs. What kind of industries were they in? Just to sort of paint a picture for us?
They were the industries that were affected. So a lot of people were working in coffee shops during the day, they might have been working in security at night, they might have been working in bars, they were within the arts community as well. There are some who've been able to be in, or a lot of them were doing cleaning jobs. So with the offices closing, they lost that. There's been lots of goodwill, but it's been that, that kind of is the majority of work that people will do and then lost. And then we can see Qantas pilots applying to do the shelf stacking at Woolies, where a lot of people were doing that before. So the competition is hard. But that, that's, there is always a diversity of people's skill sets. But that is in the whole, is where people get their first experience of working in Australia.
Thank you very much.
And just on behalf of migrant students and international students, they also worked in those jobs, and they would do any jobs. And even now, as, as things opened up a little bit, about 54 have gone to work on farms, and they still keep in contact with us, and they're earning like $6 an hour or $8 an hour, and living in crowded accommodation in rural areas, and wanting to come back because they can't sustain that. But I also think that they should be afforded the rights that citizens have and the safety nets and access to the welfare system, because it will be a New South Wales problem if we do have an outbreak. New South Wales will probably have to pay a lot more than what it would cost to give these people a decent payment.
And we've seen that in, you gave the example of Singapore, Ms Barbaro.
Yes, absolutely.
Where it was migrant workers in overcrowded accommodation, which, which led to the public health problems. And that's where the COVID-19 broke out in Singapore, even for just narrow self-interest.
Yes.
Putting it to one side, what's right?
Yeah. It will, it will be a bigger disaster than to, to give people a decent income. And I also like to say that New Zealand and Canada have given all migrants, and Cambodia, which is a country I spent most of my life in, and a very poor country. And during the pandemic, they also announced that every foreigner will be accorded the same rights as citizens. And I just wanted to respond to the question about funding. We, apart from what I said earlier, that we received the $26,000 from the EPA, we have received zero from the New South Wales State Government. And we've fundraised. So we've spent, stretched our resources, and we've, we've done well. We, we raised over $100,000 from our communities.
Any final questions?
I'll just, one final one. Ms Barbaro, you talked about how you received a $750 discount on what you're usually spending. You said it was $93,000 over the course of the pandemic. Can you give us an idea of how much a week you would be spending at Food Bank?
Probably about $9,000.
Wow, okay.
Around $9,000. I can be more accurate, if you like, with the figures.
If it gives us a sense of how much that is actually impacting on, on what you provide. I really appreciate it. Thank you very much for your testimony today.
Have any of your, have either of your organisations put a budget pitch into the government and asked for specific funding, the state government?
I, I did, after I spoke to Minister Gareth Ward.
As St Francis?
So, yeah, we applied for the funding that came out in the first tranche that was administered by Multicultural New South Wales.
If, if you're able to provide us that on notice, so we can have a look at the kind of quantum and the kind of services you were applying for, and didn't, didn't receive, I personally, I think that would be of use to the committee. So on behalf of all the committee, again, thank you for the work you do. I mean, the, the stress and the anxiety that you must, and your staff, and your volunteers must face, given the extreme need you're servicing, is very real. And I think we collectively very much, you know, extraordinarily appreciate the work you do. The, the job is to help you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.